Here.
Ms. Hogan.
Present.
Mr. Zawada. Mr. Hemingway.
Here.
Mr. Updugrove.
Here.
Mr. Brophy.
Here.
Ms. Nyman.
Here.
Mr. Panarello.
Here. If we could all rise for a pledge of allegiance, move into silence.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, law, nation, under God, invincible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, I do have you on speaker, Mr. Zawada.
Four school directors held an executive session prior to the June 13th, 2023 meeting. Topic was personnel. The session lasted approximately 45 minutes. Time period number one, Toni Erdley.
Starting at the right spot there. Okay, sorry.
No. Okay. Anyone want to ask Toni Erdley? Is she here? Oh, come on.
Hi, thank you for the opportunity. I had sent an email over the week, I think on Friday, and I just wanted to make sure that you had the opportunity to read it and to voice my opinion of the survey that was sent out from the administration. I received the survey. I had three kids that have graduated. I have two more at Boyer Town. I've had one that has graduated at the stadium. I had two that had to go to Santander. The one at Santander was because of the stadium improvements, and I think this year we were all a little surprised, the graduating class, because we assumed that it would be back at Bash, knowing the stadium was complete. Honestly, I didn't pay attention until the very end, and then I saw that it was at Santander, and I was like, well, that's a bummer. You know, it was a really great experience having my oldest there. We have fantastic pictures. There's a different vibe, a different energy, a spirit when you're graduating at your school, and it's not there at Santander. It is very plain and boring and uneventful, honestly. I think I mentioned in my email that the most memorable part was we had to wait two and a half hours to get out of the parking garage. Thankfully, not this year. Well, we actually parked outside of the parking garage, but I really just wanted to reiterate, like, it is the last experience that these kids get to be at their school grounds in the ceremonial, you know, ceremonial experience. It really needs to be at Bash. I've talked with a lot of parents. A lot of them didn't want to come because they're like, my kids are done, right? So it's almost like my kids are done. I don't need to think about it. I still have two more. I want everybody to be able to experience what my oldest did and that energy and the excitement that they have. You know, throwing your cap and gown in the nighttime is really cool. The pictures are great, and I just really want to make sure that the rest of the graduating, the rest of the classes really get the opportunity. Maybe it's a vote every year. We didn't get a vote this year in 2023. I know that if we would have, I think we all would have voted to be back at the stadium, and I do understand it is a lot. I understand it's a lot for administration to plan, but this is not for the administration. This is for the kids, and the kids really do enjoy it. I mean, they don't get a chance to really compare, but if you have been to both, I know that there's been a lot of kids that even said that they really wanted to graduate at the stadium this year. So, thank you for your time. I hope you take this into consideration. I don't know if there's other parents that are talking about graduation, but, you know, I wanted to make sure that I came and voiced my opinion. Take care.
All right, Mrs. Moyer, I'm going to turn it over to you for the Boyertown Rod and Gun Club recognition.
Okay, so I'm going to take a moment and address one other thing first, and then we'll get to the fun stuff. I wanted to give everyone an update on FBLA's Veterans Project. All of us received an email letting us know that they are within $5,000 of their $150,000 goal. So they are continuing to accept brick orders through June 30th. It will be included in next week's. It bears repeating with reminders, and there will be some more out on social media, but they are within $5,000 of their goal. So just to let you know that, they did attend the Boyertown Street Fair and handed out hundreds more flyers. They are, they should be on target for their original goal of Veterans Day for completion of the project. So I just wanted to provide an update, and now if the four of you could please join me so I'm not up here all by myself, I would love to have you come on up here. You're going to stand nice and close to me because apparently you're the spokesperson. So I have to share, I have to share a little story. This is kind of funny. People tease me all the time about being here, from here for forever, and the way we think and the way we process. Tonight was amazing. It was not the Moyer family clan walking in. It was his own different Boyertown mafia, family, friends. Everybody knew everybody. We had a little fun reunion at the beginning, so it's not just a Moyer thing. I'm just saying. So tonight, I have the pleasure of introducing all of you to three members of the Boyertown Rod and Gun Club. So I'm going to have you introduce the three of you.
My name's Howie Bullock. I'm the president of Boyertown Rod and Gun. Gentleman in the blue shirt is Bruce Pollak. He is the vice president and advisor to the board and chair of the fishing radios. And one of us is Lester Luff, who really deserves all the credit for this.
So in addition to Les, we have Stacy Tieri with us tonight as well. Stacy is the supervisor of secondary special ed, and over the course of the last two years, Lester and Stacy have worked together to provide a fishing rodeo experience for our Bash students in autistic support classrooms and life skills classrooms. This year, they held their event on May 26th at the Rod and Gun Club. The Rod and Gun Club partners with multiple other community businesses, organizations, and individuals to provide our students with a day of fishing. They are served lunch, and last year they received fishing rods. This year, my understanding is that one of their gifts was a water bottle designed by your granddaughter? So the kiddos get the chance to be out and fish in an environment that's safe for them. One of my favorite parts of this story is that this year there were 35 volunteers from the Rod and Gun Club there to support our kids. So I just wanted to take a minute and say thank you to everyone. This group is pretty humble, not big speakers, not big get-up-and-do-anything showy. Well, you are, but you said you'd give me a run for my money, so I'm not sure I'm willing to share, right? So I just want to take a moment and just share a couple of pictures from the event. Again, it's a unique circumstance. We don't do a whole lot of publicizing of the event due to the nature of and the relationship with the kiddos we have in these programs, but these are just some highlights. So it's pretty neat standing up here. I love the moments that happen that you guys can't all hear, but Emily was up on the screen, and she had her one eye closed, which is very much her. That is an expression she has all the time, and his response as he was watching. She's such a sweetheart. That is exactly what happens. I didn't get to be at this year's event. I was at last year's event. It is such a neat experience. I think I heard Mrs. Torsia say, look at her holding the fish. Jess last year, Jess was actually in two of the photos, one at the railing with one of her teachers and one of the volunteers. Last year, the difference between watching Jess last year and watching Jess this year and seeing her hold the fish and celebrate, that's attributed to you guys. Patience, kindness, compassion. Back to patience again. They, these guys stand there with the kids fishing worms on, worms on hooks, all of those great things, and it is so much fun to watch what happens and the interactions and to see everyone there. So I just wanted to take a moment tonight to say thank you to all of you. Stacy, could I have that basket? So there were 35 volunteers, and they have monthly membership meetings. So here's a gift basket for your next, for your next membership meeting, treats for all of you to share. So enjoy. I can't say thank you enough for everything that you've done for our kiddos. It is such a special event. I'd like to open it up to you guys for comments and questions before we let you go, if that's all right with you. You absolutely can.
You're here to thank us, but as the president and on behalf of the board and all the members of Boyertown Rod and Gun, we would like to thank you, the school board, the teachers, for allowing us to take part in something like this. Every one of them, young men and women, they touch the heartstrings of every board member or every club member that was there helping. I'll tell you what, you asked for people to show up. We have around 1,200 members. A lot of them are younger and everything. People showed up. We had an excess of people from the, from the club show up, even people that weren't from the club that wanted to, wanted to help because they knew about the organization. Our main man Lester here, he does a fantastic job and all that. We have other partners in the community, like you said, Gablesville DA's, they help donate money for this and everything like that. You know, as a sportsman association, we call it a gun club. We were incorporated in 1886. I wasn't there that year, but shortly after, but we're trying to reach out to the community to, to show that, you know, we're not, in this culture today, as you all well know, when you mention the word firearms or guns, it's not looked upon nice, but we're trying to reach out. We reach out to Hawk Mountain Scout Council and partner with them. We reach out to the Civil Air Patrol uses our facility and stuff like that. So there's many people, so I just want to thank yous all again, and let me tell you, Stacy and her crew, yous have a gem right there. Yous ought to recognize it. Thank you.
Ms. Nyman.
I truly want to thank you guys. It takes a very special, dedicated staff to do something like this with these kids. Patience, and you have done something for these kids that they may never experience in their life. So, thank you.
Every one of our kids wanted to hold that fish.
I caught that fish for that girl, and somebody said to her, I saw on TV where they kiss the fish. Would you kiss? And she did.
Did you?
No.
So, thank you for being here tonight. I know this isn't, I know this isn't necessarily your thing, except for you maybe, but so we're going to let you guys sneak out that way. I'm going to follow you out. Thanks for your time, guys.
Thank you.
Thank you all for participating. Next, we have Dr. Foley.
Good evening. I was asked to kind of put something together here to talk a little bit about the commencement ceremony and, is it on now? Okay, there we go, about the commencement ceremony. And so obviously, graduation this year was at June the 2nd, and it was held at Santander Arena, so you can see the slide there. We'll go to the next slide. So part of the overview and what we wanted to talk about in this particular case was is the, was the, why it was moved to Santander to begin with, what our students really want in our families, and the availability for students to be able to attend with family and a lot of family members, the cost comparison, and then a quick summary. So, we'll go to the next slide. So basically, it was moved to Santander, as it was mentioned earlier, as part of the construction process that was going on here at Bash. So the last commencement ceremony that was here at Bash was in 2017. Then in 2018, because of the construction, and then in 19, we had to rebuild the stadium, and then 2020 was kind of an odd year anyway, because between the stadium and also the COVID year, that was a virtual one, so that's the reason it was moved there to begin with. We'll go to the next slide. So we do put surveys out to the students, and the students, and part of the questions that we ask in the survey are very pointed, because the first question we get every year is, is how many tickets can I get? The second question of it is, is what happens if we have a rain? What about the weather? And then, of course, we have talking about our ADA, family members, and how we can accommodate them, and then, of course, parking. So those are the big questions that we always have to address when we do this. So looking at the Memorial Stadium, based upon the seating capacities there versus the seating capacity at Santander Arena, if it was at our stadium here, students, we get between around four tickets. Where at Santander Arena, we can offer them eight tickets for the family members. The weather implications, obviously, at Santander Arena, that's taken out of the factor that as this year, you could see, even this year, we looked at the temperatures. It was in the 90s, and then even later on that afternoon, that evening, I guess Potts Grove was, they got rained on and had to kind of reshuffle and move things out, and us coming indoors for this event is just, there's no, no capacity for us to bring that indoors into our building, so that would be out of there. Of course, you have climate control in the stadium where, you know, depending on Mother Nature, and then, of course, at Santander, we kind of know what the atmosphere is going to be there, and of course, the ADA implications, the ADA. So we have about 15 seats for handicap patrons here in our stadium, whereas in Santander Arena, we have in section 107 alone, there are six seats there, and then up on the top in the suite area, there's 50-plus up there. So, and if you had an opportunity to look at it this year, you can see it was pretty full up there as well. So, you can go to the next slide. You can go ahead. So looking at this year, this year's class would have gotten about four tickets, and then the Santander Arena, of course, the students this year were able to get eight tickets, plus there's some other things that are going on in the arena that we can put some people down on the floor where we have our teachers and stuff like that, so we keep the capacity. And if you saw the arena this year, you can see there was over 5,200 people in the arena this year. So it was nice. It was pretty full. It was great to see that. Another important thing is, is, you know, the data set, and once the data is set, then that's when it's going to be, so that has implications for people with their activities around the commencement ceremony, as well as those family members that are traveling from wherever to see this. So you can go to the next slide. So parking is always the thing. So here at Bash, obviously, when we look at the campus itself, we have about 450, 500 parking places here, and then if we go over to West, Middle School West and Elementary School, Boyertown Elementary there, we can have an additional probably 300 or 400 places there. And, but when we do that, obviously, then I'd have to hit Mr. Quigley up and find out how much he would charge me to do the shuttles back and forth between that parking lot and this parking lot, which is what has been done in the past. Obviously, we have very limited handicap parking. In the past, we've usually ended up making extra handicap parking once we know that people are going to be coming for that. The Santander Arena, we have all the parking garages in the area, and I work with the Redding Parking Authority to make sure that we get the event parking. So the event parking has one, one flat fee, and it's in all the garages around. There's some of the premium parking that is there, one right outside the state, and of course, the one across from Doubletree. But I'll tell you a secret. If you grab dinner at Doubletree, they punch your ticket and it's free. But anyway, that's just a tip. But anyway, so, but parking, there's a lot more parking available for our, our company to come and visit with us. You can go to the next slide. So just talk a little bit about the price comparison between the two places, and I want to tell you, the last time we had it in Memorial Stadium was 2017, and you can see that these numbers are reflective of that time, as well as the Santander Arena, because I don't have the final bill for this year. This is right off the invoice from last year. So this is the 2022. I don't have the invoice for 2023 yet, so I just want to make sure everybody's understanding that. But if you go down and look at the comparisons, there are some fixed costs, no matter where we have it, like the price of the diplomas, the price of the covers, those kind of things. Those are all fixed costs, and you can see some of the bigger areas there is, even though the venue is, last year was 43.75, that included the, the video and the sound in our stadium. We don't even have an opportunity for video, for like the video montages and those kind of things. But you can see there, and these are based upon if we have no rain delays or any delays in the ceremony itself for a day. But you can see the, right now, the costs, since I've been trying to keep track of this over the last several years, has been between $4,000 and $6,000 cheaper to do it at Santander than it is to do it in our own stadium. You can go and go to the next slide. The other important thing I think that we need to understand is, is it takes about 13 of our custodian and building, building and grounds folks to set up the field and all these, these moving parts here, and it takes, I had the guys go back and calculate it for me as recent as last week. It takes about 250 man-hours of our guys to do this, of which most of that is on overtime, because they can't leave their daily responsibilities to go out and do this. I mean, they have to do their daily responsibilities and then go do this, and then the teardown of this takes about 10 of our, our folks to do that. And of course, if we have inclement weather, then we add rental fees on because we have to pay to rent some of the equipment there, the chairs, the sound systems, and things like that to go along with this, this process. And then the other thing that I'm really concerned about was is this year, we would have had about five people to try to go out and get all this work done, which would have increased us by three or four days ahead of time, just to be able to get the, the field set up in time to do Santander, just because of the shortage of the staff in comparison to the years prior. You can go to the next one. So basically, the summary is this. The feedback we get from the families and the students have all been overwhelmingly positive to keep it at Santander Arena because, number one, they can invite more of their families, more of their friends. They have a set date, so all of their plans are set in, in a place where they need to be. It's a lot more accessible for our handicap patrons, and of course, the cost associated with doing the total graduation is less at Santander than it is in our stadium. So those are kind of the pieces of this, and I know this has been kind of a quick overview of this, but I don't know if you have questions? Yes, ma'am.
First of all, thank you, and can we get a copy of that presentation, please? Okay. I've talked to my family. I've talked to some other families. It's six and one half a dozen of another. Some people wanted at Boyertown, some people wanted at Santander. I tell them, if we come here to Boyertown, we're a lot more limited on our number of tickets, which I don't, I don't remember how many our stadium holds.
The stadium holds just under 3,000, I believe, with the new seating.
And Santander, I know, holds over 5,000.
Oh, yeah, we had 5,200 in there now, and we had some students not come. She's not the walk.
Even if we offer eight tickets to a family and we're not taking up the whole room, I'm sure if there's extra tickets, somebody could say, hey, Dr. Foley, I have an extra person coming from out of town or two. Can I get an extra ticket or two?
Just so you understand, the way we handle tickets is every student gets the maximum number of tickets that we can give every time. Now, we don't have any extra tickets, but we always can, you know, tell them to check with your classmates. If anybody has extra tickets, please share with your classmates. So that's the way that we get those.
So it's six and one half a dozen for, for me. I even questioned my son and my daughter-in-law. Yeah, they'd like to see it here at home, but the ticket number then comes down, and had I not been on the board, there would have been one less ticket for my son and daughter-in-law's family. So it's like, you know, I can go either way. I understand, and the weather is a big factor. If we go up there, we're not, so I'm not saying I want it here. I'm not saying I want it there. I'm saying I'm okay with whatever the class wants. So if we open it up to the class, I'm fine.
Just so you know, in the past, that's what's happened. One of the surveys, like the survey we did this year, obviously, is after, and part of the thought process on that was when you get in line for the roller coaster at Disney, they don't ask you what you think about the ride before you got on it. They ask you for, what you think about the ride when you got off, just so you understand.
Well, maybe we should put it out at the beginning of the school year and leave it and know, if we do it here at Boyertown, it's going to be this many tickets. That's it.
When we had the opportunity.
And if it rains or something, tough luck.
Delays, yeah. Yes.
I've been here a long time. We always had a rain date set. Sometimes we used it, sometimes we didn't. Had I known we wouldn't use the stadium, I would have certainly never voted to spend thousands, hundreds of thousands of dollars to build that stadium the way we did. Put 30-some bathrooms in there. We don't even use it. So to me, it's just sitting there. When we have games, yes, it's used, but there's another 3,000 people that come to those games. It would never have been built like that, ever, because of that money spent. As far as tickets, we had 400 and some graduate, correct?
We had 478 participate. We had 518 graduates.
And each of them got eight tickets?
Correct.
And yet, we had 5,200 people there?
Just under 5,200 people, yeah.
So that don't compute in my small brain. But anyway, before, when we had a shortage of tickets, people wanted tickets, we opened up the gymnasium for the overflow of people. That was done in the past, too. There's always ways we can accommodate more people. We just have to think outside of the box and, and do that. So I've gotten a lot of complaints that it was at Santander again, and I would be one that would like to move it. These children, it's all they knew for 13 years. Now we want to put them in some artificial place that they've never seen before. Some of them have for various reasons, but I think it should be brought back to their home base, so to speak. Thank you.
So the feedback that you got, was that the survey that you're talking about, and is that available for us to see the responses to that?
Yeah, I'll have to ask one of the system principals to dump that out for you, but yes, it's part of the survey we got this time, as well as, obviously, when leaving the arena, we got a lot of, you know, anecdotal type information. I don't think to tell people to, hey, send me an email, because they're, they're in the moment of their time, too.
And for Santander, when do they need to know?
I usually reserve it a year out so that we can get the date of exactly the date that we need, because the year that we had to go there, we ended up going three days or two days after school was out because we couldn't get the date that we wanted.
So, so just to give my opinion to the board and everything, I prefer it at the stadium because I think it's all about community, and I think that the community benefits, and this community goes above and beyond. Sometimes for our school, and this is an opportunity for us to feed into the community, keep everybody local, and hopefully they'll matriculate out for the restaurants and things that are close by. I think it's for school spirit and just the fact that, I agree with Mrs. Dieroff, this is the last time these kids are going to be here, so I, you know, to have it somewhere else, to me, is kind of cold and doesn't have the same feel, doesn't have the same thing going on. I mean, we could put up, I mean, I don't, I'd have to go look at the stadium, I'm just saying. You think outside the box. You could put up a big TV so people that couldn't get in, maybe there's a place they can see it. I don't know the layout, but again, I think we should think about it, and we should get feedback from the next graduating class and those parents, and I mean, not a survey that leans one way or the other, but gives the parents an opportunity to respond honestly and a chance for us to see, you know, what they feel, because it is about community, and this is a big day for these kids, and everybody around here, you don't have to have a kid graduating to be happy for them and want to see or just, you know, know that it's going to be local, you know, so that's my feeling on that.
It's my favorite day.
I'll wait.
You can hold it.
You sure? Okay. So I've been to graduation summits here at our field, and I've been to, to them at Santander. The ones here at our field, they were lovely, nice. It was very hot, difficult. Difficult for some people who had health concerns or for older people. The ones at Santander, I think the kids were, you know, super excited to be graduating here at Memorial Field. And they were super excited to be graduating at Santander. I think they're just excited to be graduating. Yeah, so I felt there was, it was a really great, for lack of a better word, vibe at Santander. And it was a great vibe here at Memorial Stadium. I think, you know, the parking was incredibly difficult at Memorial Stadium. I do remember, I mean, it was, it was bad. Like I said, elderly people, handicap people, that was hard. It was really hard. I know our party had to be separated, because we had some handicap people that needed to sit down, like at the field level. So that, so that was really difficult. Personally, I think, I, I haven't heard any students complain about Santander. In the two graduating classes that my kids were involved in, that was eighteen and nineteen, they were pretty happy and excited. The parking is easier, although I do agree that getting out can be tough, like at any big event. But I think it makes sense. The, the video component at Santander is very, very nice, so you can actually see your graduate walk up. You can see it all very close, because it's very, right there on the screen. The sound is really great there. So those things are things to consider, and it seems that our students and families are giving really great feedback about Santander, and when asked, they want it there. Is, is that's what I'm understanding? Yeah. Okay. Yeah, so I think it doesn't make a lot of sense if, if people are happy with the venue, and the students are happy with the venue, and the parents are happy, and the families are, you know, I, I don't see any reason to change that. But I appreciate the presentation and all the information, thank you.
So are you telling me you already signed the contract for next year?
I didn't sign the contract, no, but I do have a verbal ask for the next year's date.
What is the drop dead deadline for that?
He usually lets me wait until like March.
Oh, until March? Okay. Like I said before, if we had spent hundreds of thousands of dollars for something that's not coming about, I probably wouldn't be as upset, although I still think the children should be able to graduate from their home school, so to speak. Thank you.
I'm pretty much a traditionalist, you know that. I remember my graduation, it wasn't in a barn, it actually wasn't a school, just looks, looks like it was that long ago. One of the things was, is that last day, when you're looking around, you see all the places you've been and all the places you won't be again. You look forward to the place you're going to. That's a big component. Now, how many years did we have the graduation here at this stadium? A lot of years? So, so we found a way to make it work. I, I know it's work, I know it's extra stuff to do. But Santander is just a building. Most of those kids will never go back and see it ever again. If you want to have that sense of community you want to have, I believe it needs to be here at the stadium. We'll figure out, you, you, you are a lot of smart people. You really are, the entire staff, the entire administration, a lot of smart people. I know you'll figure out how to make it work if we have to. So that's not an issue for me to even think about. But I, I think that, that sending off, going away, is, you can't measure that. So I would much rather, I'm not even talking about cost, I'm not going to talk about money, I'm not talking about anything else. I'm just going to talk about what it means to the kids and the community to have that big day right here in the middle of Boyer Town, and it is a big day.
Granted, it is a big day, I graduated from Boyer Town. Mine was out on the field. My son graduated from Boyer Town, we were supposed to be out in the field, we wound up inside. Some of us in the gym, some of us in the cafeteria, some in the, we were all spread around. So that is not the same thing, sorry. What I would like to see, and I know it's going to be extra work for you, I would like to see an unbiased thing go out to the students, and an unbiased thing go out to the parents, and see what we get back. And that way, we're leaving that year's students decide what they want, majority rules. I was going to say something else, and I can't, can't think of what it was. It, it, it's just a shame, I mean, it is the kids' day, but it's also the families. And we wouldn't even have the capacity for some of the handicap to fit in here. We're, we're limited there. To me, it's six of one half, a dozen of another, it's really, the climate is a big thing. If it's really hot, or if we'd have the smoke that we had the other week, what would we be dealing with, with problems in, in the stands? And then we're going to have the medical people getting, so it, it's a lot, I don't envy you, I don't envy you at all. But if you could do two surveys, one of the students, one of the parents, and we go from there.
I think having it at the Santander Center was a great idea, all around. Money-wise, everybody's complaining about money, it was cheaper to do it there, and the fact that it was air-conditioning, and it wasn't raining, and we weren't sitting out in smoke. If that would have had to been put, put off. So I think it was a great idea to have it there, more, more family members can come there. I think it's a great idea. And as far as the, having it at the stadium would have cost them more time and more money, I don't think it's a good idea to have it at the stadium, I really don't.
I, I think it should be left up to the parents and students, I don't think it should be left up to the nine board members. I can understand the sentimental feeling behind it, wanting to be at the school. At the same time, I also see, realize that Reading is far, it's an inconvenience ride, it was a terrible ride. To be honest with you, I didn't want to do it. But at the same time, I mean, you have eight people, where a family of eight, what am I going to tell, four of my kids stay home? It doesn't make any sense. And now you're telling me, if that's, I mean, you ran the numbers, you're telling me it's also cheaper, it doesn't? I don't know, I think it should be up to the parents, students.
I know, I was looking at the numbers again. And yeah, you were counting the eight tickets for the families, but then we have to count the students also. So when you count everything in there, plus all the teachers that are there, the band people that are there, we're, we're getting up there to the five thousand mark easily. So with that in mind, where are we going to put all those people at the stadium? It, it's, I, I, I mean, I'm game, but if we go down to four tickets, you're going to have people calling you, especially when you have a family that's not the ideal family. They're separated, they're divorced, now you're dealing with two families. And that's going to be more of a headache for you.
Even with eight, we still get that.
I know, but.
Could we see the quotes that you're, you're quoting, you know, for the sound system and the chairs? Can we see the actual quotes that you received for those?
I'll have to get that from the business, I mean, the, the grounds and, and maintenance people, yes. Also, just to your point, just so you understand, we actually do a graduation walk with the kids, too. I'm not sure if you're familiar with that or not. So the kids actually will go through elementary, middle school, and then we actually are here the last day of school, too. Yeah, so, okay.
I remember that, it's a very, very good, very good thing to have.
This will be the last time I'm talking. I think we're getting a lot pinned here. I, I don't see doing a survey for the parents, doing another survey for the students, and for the class that we have graduating. You're going to be crazy doing surveys every year, and that's ridiculous. We got to make a decision and stick with it, like we did before. The only reason it was changed, because we had to work on the stadium. So I, I think administration should make a decision based on all the facts, and check out the numbers and, and what we have going on and so forth, and, and that's the way it's going to be.
And that's kind of what's led us where we're at.
Well, I mean, to keep doing surveys, one for the students, one for the parents, and one this year, then do another one next year. You'll be going crazy not knowing where you're having graduation.
But based upon all the facts, it's kind of where we're at right now. This is the reason why we do it at Santander.
Well, I don't think before it ever came up for discussion, because I had requested it before, it never came up for discussion, why we're going to Santander again. I don't think the parents ever had a, a opportunity to talk. Students might have, but I don't think the parents, I, I never seen a meeting where the parents were actually asked. And, and I didn't know anything about this survey going out either, because to me, it wasn't a survey that went out. So that's my opinion, which you can argue with me all day long, it's okay. But, you know, this is getting us nowhere tonight.
I, I, I agree, Mrs. Deroff, it's got to go one way or the other. I don't think having surveys every year is the answer. It's like, it's like a yo-yo. What are we doing this year? We're, the administration and board and all, we're here to make decisions. I, I don't believe we should be farming that out, to have someone tell us what the decision is. We go, whatever the decision is, it needs to be one way or the other, and that's what we're going forward with. If now the parents and the students want to weigh in on it now, at this point in time, that's more than welcome. But I, I think, I agree, Mrs. Deroff, if you go to surveys every year, it, it's going to be pandemonium. We won't know for one year, the next what we're doing. And you're probably going to find in trouble of, the first year you don't have it there, Santander's going to say, well, you're not a reliable customer, so we're not sure we're going to hold the dates for you. I just, I just think you put yourselves in a bad situation.
Thank you.
Thank you.
At this time, I'd like to make a motion to amend the personnel agenda to include the following action items. Transfer of an administrator, which is necessary due to emergent need, to advertise for a building's principal position, and have filled by the start of the 2023, 2024 school year. Motion?
Lyman moves.
I'll second.
Discussion?
Ms. Deroff?
Yes.
Mrs. Scott?
Yes.
Mrs. Hogan?
Yes.
Mr. Zawada? Mr. Hemingway?
Yes.
Mr. Updegrove?
Yes.
Mr. Brophy?
Yes.
Ms. Nyman?
Yes.
Mr. Panarello?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Under the president's report, we would like to present the personnel agenda. And under the personnel agenda, I would like to point out a few things. First, I would like to, apologies, I would like to recognize that our Director of Teaching and Learning, Dr. Sarah Barrow is, has submitted her resignation. And I just wanted to take the opportunity to, you know, thank Dr. Barrow for all of the hard work, all of her dedication, as I see, you know, a sea of red heads nodding in support of the work that Dr. Barrow has done to support our teachers in, you know, helping our students to learn. So I just wanted to recognize Dr. Barrow with that. Along with the resignations of Dr. Barrow, we have Amanda Geist, Suzanne Begani, Yvonne Drescher. And then I would be asking for the board to approve the personnel agenda as presented, along with the personnel agenda addendum, which would be recognizing Mrs. Stephanie Landis to be moving from the Principal of Middle School West to the Director of Teaching and Learning Education Center. So at this point, I'm looking for the Board of School Directors to approve the personnel agenda and the addendum as presented.
I'll move.
Did we have any public comment yet?
Given, yes, we did have one.
Okay, okay, so, we are finished, okay.
Nine in seconds. Mr. Updegrove first, and then Ms. Nyman second.
Ms. Deroff? Mrs. Scott?
Yes.
Ms. Hogan?
Yes.
Mr. Zawada? Mr. Hemingway?
Yes.
Mr. Updegrove?
Yes.
Mr. Brophy?
Yes.
Ms. Nyman?
Yes.
Mr. Panarello?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Congratulations, Mrs. Landis, thank you for joining us this evening.
Ms. Hogan, BCIU?
Yes, thank you. So there have been some leadership changes at the BCIU. I, there is a new Chief Operating Officer, a new Chief Financial Officer, and a couple other positions. And our last meeting was May 18th, I was unable to make that meeting, but I did send out all of the what happened at the BCIU, the newsletters, and a memo about the leadership changes. So if anyone didn't receive it, or it wasn't, or you don't have it, just let me know, and I'll resend. That's all for me, thanks.
Ms. Updegrove, BCTC?
Yes, I have ninety students from the Berks Career Technology Center, and the Redding-Muellenberg Career and Technology Center were honored on May 1st for their post-secondary commitments to education, the military, and the workforce at the Decision Day Ceremony. We had Griffin O'Brien, the BCTC East Culinary Student, a senior, at Boyer Town Senior High, was presented with a $1,200 scholarship in memorial of the Eon Towers in the East Conery, and Boyer Town classmate who unexpectedly passed away last year. The scholarship was made possible by the Boyer Town Education Association. And Elon's brother, James, who ran twenty-three miles on his twenty-third birthday to celebrate his brother and raise money for the scholarship. We had six hundred and eighteen students who were recognized on May 30th at the Senior Region Ceremony for completing their programs at the BCTC. Thank you, that's all I have.
This time, we're looking for the approval of the May 23rd, 2023 Board of School Directors Meeting Minutes?
Nyman moves. Hogan, second.
Ms. Deroff?
Yes.
Mrs. Scott?
Yes.
Ms. Hogan?
Yes.
Mr. Zawada?
Yes.
Mr. Hemingway?
Yes.
Mr. Updegrove?
Yes.
Mr. Brophy?
Yes.
Ms. Nyman?
Yes.
Mr. Panarello?
Yes.
Motion carries.
All right, the superintendent's itemized agenda. Tonight, we will be looking for the Board of School Directors to approve the following overnight trip as listed. The overnight trip is for, the administration recommends that the Board of School Directors approve the overnight trip, I'm sorry, for the BASH students traveling to the Naval Station in Newport, Rhode Island on June 22nd through July 8th, for the Naval Science NJROTC trip.
Nyman moves.
I'll second.
Ms. Deroff?
Yes.
Mrs. Scott?
Yes.
Ms. Hogan?
Yes.
Mr. Zawada? Mr. Hemingway?
Yes.
Mr. Updegrove?
Yes.
Mr. Brophy?
Yes.
Ms. Nyman?
Yes.
Mr. Panarello?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Next, we will be looking for the board, the, the Board of School Directors to approve the 2023, 24 BASH School Musical, The Hunchback of Notre Dame, including the proposed budget.
Hogan motions.
Nyman seconds.
Ms. Deroff?
I have a question, can I ask it? I see on there we have sub-
Um, I see on there we have subcontractors, are those our children, or are these people we hire on the outside? Like for the costume designers, set designers?
My understanding is that they are people from the outside.
Okay, if, I had asked this before, why we do that? If this is something the children are putting on, the kids, um, and they need the experience, et cetera, et cetera, to do these plays, then why don't we utilize their talent?
Is there anyone in the room that might be able to help me with that answer?
I know this year they're, uh, looking at renting the full set for Hunchback, where it comes in on a tractor trailer and is set up. Um, in years past, with the fact that, um, kids are dancing on these sets, uh, the students don't have the, necessarily the, the technical skills. They have the ability to go and help and learn, but they're not actually building it, they don't get paid. So there are paid people that come in to build those sets to make sure that they are safe and kids can dance on them.
Well, I wouldn't necessarily be talking about building sets, like costume designers.
I'm a costumer, I can speak on that. Do you'd like me to?
Uh, yeah, I'd like to know, uh, the children are, are kiddos.
The children help, but Mr., well, a- all the, all the directors have always used someone that is either a teacher or an adult, because we have to do things like, we do backstage changes with the kids, like 30 seconds to go from one thing to another, and they can't just say to kids, plus we have emergency situations where people pass out on stage, and a lot of times, other than the stage crew, I'm the only adult backstage. And plus, we, we spend thousands of dollars on costumes, and I go constant back and forth with the costume company to make changes so that we can make sure that everything is what is needed for our show. When things show up, uh, I'm, I spend hundreds of hours till midnight at, at the high school doing alterations, and I, I have three or four moms who help me, that's about it. So it's not something, we always have one or two kids who want to help, but there is no way that the high school could do a show with students doing it, especially now that we don't have the, the large amount of num- of kids who know how sew, like they did when we had FCS in the middle schools. So, there's no way that they could possibly done, be done by the students in the school.
Okay, that goes for, for everything, the setting designs for, for everything that we're doing. I said, that goes for all the $11,000 we're paying, it goes for, because we don't have the help, nobody volunteers anymore? Is that?
I mean, some parents volunteer, but they have other kids doing other activities, they aren't, they aren't, I mean, I, I'll spend, I start in November, like I've already ordered plots to see like which costume companies have what we would need to, to use, how much it would cost, so that's something I've started now, anticipating this would hopefully be approved tonight, and I'll work on it until.
So you're making the costumes yourself?
We make some of the costumes, but most of them are rented because there's no more storage at the high school. When they did the renovations, we lost the whole upstairs, so we can no longer build costumes and then keep them because there's no storage, so we rent most of the things now.
It, it's just a shame that the kiddos are doing this, that.
They help with painting, they help with, like I said, they help with some sewing, they help with other things.
Because I know we used to hire choreographers and all that before, I didn't see any this time on the list.
We don't usually have, and this show doesn't have a lot of choreography. Sometimes we have a student who will be like a dance captain, that's more typical at a high school level. They don't usually participate as the choreographers.
And then there was additional monthly rental, what is that?
That's on the, um, score. When you get the music and the books from the company, it's for a very short period of time. If you are a professional group going to do it, a semi-professional group, uh, professional actors doing it, you might only need it for six weeks, so beyond that time period, if you need the show to be rented for longer, so that your kids can learn it and all, it costs more money, depending on how long you're renting it for.
Okay, thank you so much for answering that. The other thing I, I suggested once before, don't go away, you're a volunteer. You're a good volunteer, stay there.
My show's coming up for, for approval next, or.
So we're not going to make you happy if we say yes to this?
No, mine's a different show, so, I mean, for the middle school.
Oh, what's the name of that one?
We're not allowed to say it. I am not allowed to say it, because if there are parents here, they'll go home and tell their kids, and we don't want them to say anything until we know it's approved. A whisper in your ear later, if you want to.
What I wanted to say was, I had asked before that if we could extend it, like on a Sunday afternoon, I don't know what days you have.
They usually do them on a Sunday afternoon.
Or, or sometime that we could have the senior citizens, uh, just for them and they wouldn't have to.
That's not a royalty, that's a royalty thing, you can't do free performances and they, so that's a, that's not up to us, that's the company. That's not an option, in most cases. You, you pay to do the show based on how many performances you're doing, and how many tickets you're selling, and how many, whatever price.
But if you do it free for the seniors.
You're not allowed, if we say we're going to do a show that's free, then they will charge us and we won't have any money coming in to cover the extra cost for that show. So that's not our choice, that's on.
Thank you for shaking me out on that too.
Anything else?
I'm going to quit while I'm ahead.
Stay, thank you to my audience members, I appreciate the, the help there.
Ms. Deraf.
Yes.
Mrs. Scott.
Yes.
Ms. Hogan.
Yes.
Mr. Zawada.
Yes.
Mr. Hemingway.
Yes.
Mr. Updugrove.
Yes.
Mr. Brophy.
Yes.
Ms. Nyman.
Yes.
Mr. Panarello.
Yes.
Motion carries.
Next is for the School Board of Directors to approve the 23-2024 BCIU Early Intervention Lease Agreement as presented.
Hogan motions.
Nine in seconds.
Discussion?
I guess it's me again. Um, I, I just, I know you said we raised the, uh, rental this year, uh, which hasn't been raised for a while, but, a- and I hope I, in a way, I hope I read this wrong. Uh, we're also supplying a, uh, janitor for them.
We don't, we do not supply a separate janitor?
No, but we, it includes janitorial services, let's put it that way. You know, and, and we're also getting, uh, what is it, $50 a, a week? $11.25 a day? Can I rent it for that?
I- i- if you did the math and broke down what the lease agreement is, um, just a reminder that the BCIU Early Intervention Program is a program that is supporting, um, Borre Town Element, or not elementary, Borre Town area, school district, um, members of our community who have school-aged children with disabilities. And so they participate in this program, which is provided to every child three to age five at no cost. It is, you know, a program that has been in place for, I'm not really good with my history, but for, for at least, um, 30 years, because that's how long I've been in education, so, um, I know it goes further than that. But, um, it is a program that is getting our students ready, um, who may have, um, you know, whether they're autistic, intellectual disabilities, developmental delays, um, they are preparing them for school and helping to ease that transition. So, um, what I did have as part of our discussion with the, um, BCIU folks is that due to the lateness of reviewing the contract, that we would be addressing it again next year to make sure that we are, um, getting, you know, s- support for our, you know, building usage.
I, I want to see that all the children get the education they should have, especially this type of child, but it, to me, that's, it's costing us money. And if all is everybody's okay with it, that's fine.
So I just, I just wanted to add that early intervention services, um, while they do cost money, um, we do know, and the data proves, uh, that when we intervene earlier in the process, children, um, tend to do better over long-term, and then, you know, it also costs us money when children come into kindergarten and they're completely unprepared, um, for, to, to be in an education setting, and they don't have the skills they need to succeed. So, um, I think that this is, uh, a fair and good investment in the future, um, of our students, thank you.
Ms. Deraf.
Yes.
Mrs. Scott.
Yes.
Ms. Hogan.
Yes.
Mr. Zawada.
Yes.
Mr. Hemingway.
Yes.
Mr. Updugrove.
Yes.
Mr. Brophy.
Yes.
Ms. Nyman.
Yes.
Mr. Panarello.
Yes.
Motion carries.
Next, we have the Board of School Directors to approve the 2023-2024 District Envelope Bid as presented.
Hogan motions.
Panarello, seconds.
Ms. Deraf.
Yes.
Mrs. Scott.
Yes.
Ms. Hogan.
Yes.
Mr. Zawada.
Yes.
Mr. Hemingway.
Yes.
Mr. Updugrove.
Yes.
Mr. Brophy.
Yes.
Ms. Nyman.
Yes.
Mr. Panarello.
Yes.
Motion carries.
Next up, um, for the Board of School Directors to approve the award of the above-stated bids for the 23-24 school year.
Hogan motions.
I'll second.
Ms. Deraf.
She has a question.
I'm sorry, uh, I know these are bids for next year's supplies, but are they being paid for out of this year's budget or next year's?
Next year's budget.
Thank you. Yes.
Mrs. Scott. Yes.
Ms. Hogan.
Yes.
Mr. Zawada.
Yes.
Mr. Hemingway.
Yes.
Mr. Updugrove.
Yes.
Mr. Brophy.
Yes.
Ms. Nyman.
Yes.
Mr. Panarello.
Yes.
Motion carries.
Next, I'm looking for the Board of School Directors to approve the appointment of Patricia J. Denacola as Board Secretary effective July 1, 2023, through June 30th, 2027.
Nyman moves.
So we have Ms. Nyman and Ms., uh, Mrs. Deraf. I'm going to recognize Ms. Nyman as a first motion, and Mrs. Deraf as second.
Ms. Deraf.
Yes.
Mrs. Scott.
Yes.
Ms. Hogan.
Yes.
Mr. Zawada.
Yes.
Mr. Hemingway.
Yes.
Mr. Updugrove.
Yes.
Mr. Brophy.
Yes.
Ms. Nyman.
Yes.
Mr. Panarello.
Yes.
Motion carries.
Next, I'm looking for the Board of School Directors to approve the appointment of Mrs. Carrie Fox to the Position of Board Treasurer for the 2023-2024 Fiscal Year at an annual stipend of $1,200.
Deraf moves.
Hogan seconds.
Ms. Deraf.
Yes.
Mrs. Scott.
Yes.
Ms. Hogan.
Yes.
Mr. Zawada.
Yes.
Mr. Hemingway.
Yes.
Mr. Updugrove.
Yes.
Mr. Brophy.
Yes.
Ms. Nyman.
Yes.
Mr. Panarello.
Yes.
Motion carries.
Next, I'm looking for the Board of School Directors to approve the 2023-2024-2024-2025 and 2025-2026 Palm Valley Landscaping Agreements as presented.
Hogan seconds.
Have we put this out to bid again to see if there's anybody else out there cheaper? I did have a complaint from a couple people that have seen their track, or their mowers, driving on the road, from Circle K to up here, so. But I would like to know if there were other. Okay, thank you.
Um, I had a lot of feedback on this particular company, how great they are, and we're very lucky to get the prices we got. So, thank you. Yes.
Mrs. Scott.
Yes.
Ms. Hogan.
Yes.
Mr. Zawada.
Yes.
Mr. Hemingway.
Yes.
Mr. Updugrove.
Yes.
Mr. Brophy.
Yes.
Ms. Nyman.
Yes.
Mr. Panarello.
Yes.
Motion carries.
Next, I'm looking for the Board of School Directors to approve the Bill of Sale for Sanitary Sewer Lateral Agreement as presented.
Nyman moves. Hogan seconds.
Ms. Deraf.
Yes.
Mrs. Scott.
Yes.
Ms. Hogan.
Yes.
Mr. Zawada.
Yes.
Mr. Hemingway.
Yes.
Mr. Updugrove.
Yes.
Mr. Brophy.
Yes.
Ms. Nyman.
Yes.
Mr. Panarello.
Yes.
Motion carries.
Next, for the Board of School Directors to approve the 2023-2024 Sports Student Accident Insurance as presented.
Nyman moves. Hogan seconds.
Ms. Deraf.
Yes.
Mrs. Scott.
Yes.
Ms. Hogan.
Yes.
Mr. Zawada. Mr. Hemingway.
Yes.
Mr. Updugrove.
Yes.
Mr. Brophy.
Yes.
Ms. Nyman.
Yes.
Mr. Panarello.
Yes.
Motion carries.
That concludes the superintendent's itemized report.
We have public comment period number two, Mr. Ami.
Before you start the timer, can I make a point of order real quick? Um, I think what Mr. Saltanic was saying earlier is that when you made the, the amendment to the Personnel Agenda Item, uh, you were supposed to offer a public comment in case anyone had any comments on that. Um, I may be wrong about that, but I think whenever you make a change to the agenda, you're supposed to make, you're supposed to allow for a public comment, maybe no one would have commented, but you still have to offer it anyway.
It's my understanding, since we posted the agenda item, we, we went one step further.
Okay.
It obviated the need for that, but if there is somebody who has a compelling desire to talk about, uh, th- that modification to the personnel issue, we can.
Okay, no, 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 I just was, I wasn't sure, thanks.
Okay, but we, we, uh, we put in the language which we didn't need to do in advance.
Okay, okay. Red is on, right, yes, okay, it's on. Uh, John, John Ami New Hanover Township, I'm going to talk a little bit about the budget, I wasn't, I didn't talk much about the budget this year because I make comments and doesn't seem to get paid attention, but, um, did want to clarify some things, there was a lot of discussion last week about, um, uh, cyber charter costs increasing, and all these things that are happening outside our control, and the PSA not helping us with, uh, cyber charter expenditures. Look, let's be clear, cyber charter and education funding, public education funding in Pennsylvania does need to be reformed, but that's not why the district is in the situation it's in right now. The district is in the situation it is right now because, three years ago, we started leaving a cumulative total of $5 million on the table without a plan to address all the things that needed to be addressed, increasing costs, potential, uh, potential inflation, any other surprise events. We did this to save the taxpayers about $10 a month, which is fine, but like I said, we did it without a plan. The board voted on these, did it without a plan. I told you about this two years ago, I told you about this last year. We had five separate meetings that were set, that's different days set aside this week, or this year, where you could have talked about the budget and planned for the things that we're now talking about. You didn't do it. You pass these budgets with nary a bit of discussion, I think we discussed graduation tonight more than we discussed the budget. The budget is the most important thing this school board does. If you're going to make decisions about the budget, you need to understand the impacts of the decisions that you make. You need to have fair and open discussions about what those, what those impacts are going to be. You need to plan for them, so that we're not here, three years later, talking about trying to blame the PSCA for maybe having not a great teacher's contract next year, or talking about cutting things. This is entirely on this school board. I hope this time you listen. My guess is a board comment, I'm going to hear all the excuses about why I'm wrong, though. Thank you.
I'm going to pass.
I would like the public to know that, um, the Finance Committee has spent a lot of time with Patty, uh, looking at numbers, figuring out ways we can, we can, um, reduce costs that, uh, basically charge school does cause a huge amount of money. Um, and what I will say is, there's been discussions, this board, this, this thing was not just passed with nobody's concerns. I mean, what has been brought up or hasn't been brought up, I mean, last year, we did a, uh, I mean, what has been brought up or hasn't been brought up. I mean, last year, we did a, um, a budget, and basically with Patty's help and her projections, the school, we did not have the discipline that we have now, or, or last year that we were planning on. It's hard to figure out what's gonna be in the future. I mean, unless, uh, we have that magic ball, you know, you can sit there and plan all you want, uh, but, you know, we, that's one of the reasons that we're in the position that we're in, that we do have a little bit of cushion if there is something that happens. Basically, this whole district's in a better financial settlement than a lot of other school districts. And, um, again, I would like to congratulate Patty and, and, um, Mary Bass for what they've done to try to do things. We would continue to work and try to make savings anywhere we can, definitely, and we will approach it from there. I would like to congratulate Mrs. Landis on her position. I think she'll be a great person in that position and look forward to working with her. And, um, again, I apologize for not being here tonight. Beats with a fever and everything else. I could have got everybody sick. So, again, everybody have a nice night and a great, and I appreciate the ability to, um, to give my opinion.
Yes, I, I want, I appreciate Mrs. Danicola. I did spend some time with her last week discussing not just budget, but finances and, and digging a little deeper, getting a deeper understanding of it, and so, uh, for that, I do appreciate her time. Also, Mrs. Torsia's time in digging deeper and getting a better understanding of how we use, um, our counselors and our school-based counselors and our social workers and, and seeing what, what, what are our kids, what are they struggling with? And that's something that you don't always get here, and so I appreciate the time that she also gave me for that. I think that was one other thing, so. No, I think that's it. Thank you. Have a good night.
Um, I wanted to thank Dr. Obara for her time here and her service to the district and the students. She's a great loss, but, you know, I'm, I'm very excited for her, uh, new opportunity. Um, I want to congratulate Mrs. Landis, who I did have the opportunity to, um, my, when my son was over at GES and she was the principal there, she's, um, very professional, and I look forward to seeing what she's gonna do in that role. And then I just wanted to remind everyone about the FBLA, um, bricks that are for sale to complete the Veterans Memorial. So, um, as I believe, um, it was said earlier, they need about five thousand dollars worth, um, five thousand dollars of funds to, to complete their fundraising by June 30th. Um, it's a great opportunity to honor a veteran or to leave your mark, um, here in Boyertown, so I hope that, um, some bricks can get purchased and they can complete their project. I think that's it for me tonight. Thank you.
I already bought my brick, so I'm, I'm in there for that already. Uh, no, nothing further than that.
Yeah, no, I have no comment.
Sorry to see Mrs. O-, uh, Dr. Obara leave, but I'm glad to see Mrs. Landis coming on board. Thank you for accepting that position. Wanted to share with everybody that Alice Gerhart did pass away on May 23rd of this year. She was an art teacher for us. And I'm sure many of you remember her and all that she's done for our community, but she did pass away now. So, thank you.
I want to officially congratulate the class of 2023 because now they've graduated since our last meeting, especially my oldest. Thank Dr. Obara for everything she's done. She taught me a lot about, uh, curriculum last year when I got on the board. And congratulate, um, Mrs. Landis because she was, uh, the GE principal for three of my boys. They all know her and love her, and I'm glad that she, uh, got the position. That's about it.
I don't know. Is that allowed, Mr. Panarello?
I guess.
Real quick, um, talking to some of the parents at the, at the graduation, talking to previous uh, parents that had their children graduate, um, I know we're talking about surveys, but I would, our, we've been talking about, you know, AP classes, EIP classes, but we have students that now, the way the colleges are looking at, they're looking at not so much what their GPA is, but, you know, the, the credits that they earn and the classes that they are, have availability to it. So, um, I know some classes were cut, but this affects, um, our AP classes, our AP students. And I would like to see if it, at one point, we could sit down and try to figure out a way to, I know we don't, we're talking about trying to save money, but at the same time, we're not necessarily, um, get, um, giving our AP students the education that they need to further theirs. So that's what I have to say, and I apologize for not bringing it up the first time.
Thank you, Mr. Zawada, but just to clarify, we have not cut any AP offerings. AP classes fill up um, based upon student interest, and if there's not enough students to, um, put into a class, then that class does not run. So, please, you know, share that we're not cutting AP classes at all. Um, we have a pretty expansive list of AP opportunities for students. It, it's really based upon that student interest. But I, we do appreciate your comment and your support of, of, um, the AP offerings.
And real quick, maybe we need to do a review and look at what the colleges are looking at more so now than maybe possibly changing some of the AP classes to make them more, um, college, I don't know, is the best way to say. I just know that, um, that our two vautorians last year, um, had to make up, uh, additional classes in, in computer science because we didn't offer it. So that's the only reason I brought it up. So maybe we can, like I said, at another time, sit and meet with Dr. Foley, Mrs. Landis, and Mr. South and see if there's something that we can get, talking to a couple of these other colleges and see what the students need.
Sounds good, Mr. Zawada. Thank you. All right, our upcoming, uh, meeting dates, our next meeting will be held on Wednesday, June 28th, um, and it will be here, and after that, we will, um, post if we plan to hold a July meeting at this time. There is, um, nothing that is posing it, but there could be the potential for a Personnel, um, Agenda Item to be approved based upon the replacement of, uh, Mrs. Landis, so, um, please stay tuned for July.
Nyman moves.
Are we having it the 18th? Is that canceled?
No, I mean, our next meeting's the 28th.
Yeah, I know, July I'm talking about.
We talked about it.
Depends on if we need it or not.
Well, then they shouldn't tell us it's gonna be.